I have thirty, and I will call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is reception of guests. Michael, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Mike Greshman. I'm from Cabot, Vermont, and I've been working with the owners of the Brooklyn Mall for the last two and a half years on the various initiatives that you may have heard about, the transformation of the sixty-five acre parcel into more of a town center, mixed-use, pedestrian-oriented project. And we've been working closely with the town over that period of time. Some of the things that have happened as a result were the big art, little art exhibit that we had, Walk the Long Trail at Berlin Mall, which will be starting that for the third year here in January, and the recently announced hundred-unit senior housing project will be built on access property at the mall adjacent to Walmart.
And I invited Michael to come and speak to us in very general terms about different things that the mall property owners may be interested with respect to land that borders the school property, and also, you know, things that may be of mutual benefit for the school or for the town. And so, we won't get into any specifics, but just to have that general discussion, and we can look at when we have that under, let's look at 1.2 Agenda Review and Revisions.
I'd like to add, like, a three... Last, I just want to talk about the board meeting schedule going forward and what we have for thinking about future board meetings, and with my head being in what's been in for the past week, it's, I came with the decision today, literally, that I wanted to have this discussion with every local board.
Okay.
Right?
All right. No objections. We'll add that as 3.6. Any other revisions to the agenda?
Are you going to move up the mall?
So, that would be my next suggestion would be we can move up the discussion about the mall property for our guest who is here, and that's number 3.5. We'll take that up. We can take that up next. So, like I had said, this was just to have a general discussion about some of the things that were, are being considered with respect to the mall property. Michael, did you have a map, perhaps, that we could look at while we have this conversation?
That will need to, because I updated software today, which seemed to leave me with an inoperable printer after I finished.
Okay. So, to me, Carl's, or to Bill and Carl to share?
Okay. And Carl, you've seen this.
So, do you want me to sort of describe what's on?
Yeah, if you can describe what's on the map and what we're looking at here.
All right. As I mentioned, the mall has a sixty-five acre parcel, and back in the early eighties, when the Act 250 permit was first given, there were several so-called out parcels that were created. Most of those out parcels have been dormant for the ensuing thirty-plus years. Recently, a couple of those were combined and became the site of the Kohl's Department Store. Another one of them, Outlet B, which is that little triangle just below the Garden Center of Walmart, is where the senior housing project will be. And then, there are two others, Outlets A and C, on that map where it says two-plus-acre hotel residential restaurant site underneath that label, so right in there. Now, if you see on that diagram, there's the roughly ten-acre, it's called oftentimes the Town Forest Parcel or whatever, but it's really, as you know, a portion of the holdings for the Berlin Elementary School. And it is a effectively landlocked parcel, because the only road frontage it has is on Route 62, and it's literally impossible to get additional curb cuts on Route 62. If you look at that green dotted line that's there, that's the approximate boundary line between the school parcel and a fairly thin strip of land that runs along the mall access road. So, the mall there has a thin strip of land that has all kinds of road frontage, but it has no depth to it. So, one of the things you do as a developer, and my background is law, planning, and development, is you try to look for situations whereby combining things a little bit differently or whatever, you can try to create value or create opportunities. So, something that occurred to me a couple of years ago, actually, and I've worked off and on it since then, is whether there would be an opportunity with the mall and possibly the town in some kind of a role in the school board, or can you create a development pad that would be appropriate for multifamily housing, potentially affordable multifamily housing, that would both benefit the school district in terms of creating some value to a portion of a piece of land now that has no real development value, but maybe more importantly, would increase the student base for the school, and with students that would be literally able to walk to school on a trail system through the woods without ever crossing a road. I have had some discussions with third parties. The mall owner itself is not a residential developer. We're not developing the senior housing project. It's a Vermont developer that we located and are doing joint venture with. And I've had discussions with other third-party Vermont-based developers that I think would have an interest in a development pad for multifamily housing there. And so, this was something that I brought up with both the past chair of the school board and with Chris, and I know with Act 46, you're facing, you know, sort of a deadline in terms of a change in status. And so, there may be a logical time to look at whether there's something here that could be a benefit for all parties concerned. So, that's basically where it is now. It's at the talking stages, and we're happy to cooperate in some fashion. There's a more complicated version of this that unfortunately involves yet another third party that I don't control, and that potentially could lead to the school ending up with additional land immediately behind the playing fields that you have now that would allow for expanded playing fields. So, that's sort of a Plan A, Plan B, if you will, but as a, yes, back, basically just north of the words, approximate boundary.
So, Mike, that's mall property, but there's a third party who has an interest in it as well?
Yes, so it's not something that the mall unilaterally can do by itself.
And that goes all the way out to the Payne Turnpike?
Mm-hmm. So, the first one that I described is something that could be done simply between the school and the mall owners. The one that would involve a playing field would require at least this out-of-state third party to sign off on it in some fashion, and that one probably would be more likely maybe to have a town role in it as well, that maybe those playing fields would be some kind of a cooperative venture between the school and the town.
So, in the conversation that I had, conversations I've had with Mike and recently with the town, I would, you know, our interest, I think, is in some multifamily development, if that's a possibility, to help improve our school population, and also in improving our rec fields, if there's any way that we can do that. Those were the two big things that I brought up, what I wanted to have the board and superintendent and principal weigh in, just some of the general ideas behind this and what we would be looking to get out of some sort of deal involving the mall owners and the town.
And maybe if I gave a couple of numbers, it would help with the scale of what we're talking about here, pending actually getting out there and doing a survey on the property that would be involved. A lot of that property, as you know, is Class II wetlands, and so that obviously can't be touched. There's a buffer back from that. So, it's basically a strip that would be parallel to the entry road, so it would be sort of a long, narrow kind of a building as opposed to a more square building. I think we could potentially be talking about fifty to sixty units of multifamily housing, which would be meaning two-to-three-bedroom units, and if you think of one and a half to two children probably per unit, you could be talking about seventy-five to one hundred and twenty students coming from literally that one project. Now, they all wouldn't be school-aged, but most of them would be. So, it could be a pretty significant addition to the school-age population.
Are you looking at low-income or residents who you like partnering with?
It's, I'd rather not get into it, because no deal has been struck with anybody. It could be anything from affordable, which are all kinds of definitions from low-income and sort of workforce.
Right, you have to have a certain ratio. You have to have a ratio.
Yeah, a lot of the focus now is on workforce housing, which is sort of eighty percent to one hundred and fifty percent of median income. And then, another model that works well in Vermont, and I worked for Housing Vermont back in my first stint in Vermont, but is a mixed income project where some of the units are affordable and meet those standards, and then other units are market-rate units. So, it's early stages of those discussions, and there's more than one developer that I've been talking to, and so, you know, someplace along that spectrum.
Yep. That's fair.
Now, did I understand you to say there are two proposed residential developments?
One right now.
Or two locations for proposed residential development?
Well, the one that's been proposed and that a private developer's going to move forward on is a roughly one hundred-unit senior housing project. It's everything from independent living, assisted living, and memory care, all under one roof. Meals provided, three meals a day for the assisted, and memory care units, one meal a day for the independent. So, it's both a residential project and an operating business, if you will. Both the assisted living and the memory care are licensed by the state. The independent living, of course, doesn't need to be licensed. That's on that little piece next to the Garden Center at Walmart. This separate one that I'm talking about would be multifamily.
Goes all the way out to Payne Turnpike.
Pardon me?
The piece that goes all the way out to Payne Turnpike?
No, that, that doesn't...
Immediately adjacent.
Immediately adjacent, exactly. So, as you come in the entry road, and just as you get to Walmart, you can turn and go around behind the mall, right there, there's sort of a knoll, which would be graded down, but right, right there. The second development opportunity, the one that I'm talking about, would be along the entry road. As you came into the mall, it would be on your left, and it would be parallel to the road there.
And that yellow, excuse me, orange area with the orange dotted line does not impinge on the wetland?
That's correct. That's my rough approximation, again, not going out there with a wetlands consultant, but looking at the wetlands maps that the state has, knowing what the buffer is, et cetera. So, that's just, you know, it's more than eyeballing it, but it's just an approximation at this point of where I think the development pad would be.
You have a faint orange line just to the east of the school parking lot. Is that wetland delineation, or is that a subdivision within school and property? Or maybe I'm seeing things?
Parallel to the dotted green line?
The orange lines that are on here are parcel lines, but they aren't. They're from tax maps, and they're on, you know, a state database. They aren't completely accurate, and that's why I dropped that little green line in, because I have a survey, of course, of the mall property, and that green line is very close to where the actual property line is, as opposed to that orange line that is, oh, I don't know, fifty or seventy-five feet to the left of it on that sheet that you're looking at.
Okay, so there, am I, maybe it's just the photocopy, so there is no orange line just to the east of the parking lot? That's not a...
No, that's just, that's the printer leaking, yeah. No, that's, that's the property line ostensibly for the school.
Couldn't see it, but with my eyes, he's...
But this is more accurate.
Sharp and lots of light.
So, you know, what the nub of this is, is both the school and the mall owner in that area have pieces of property that they really can't do anything with, and at the moment, neither by itself has any value. But if they cooperate and put their two pieces together, there is a development opportunity, and maybe more importantly, there's an opportunity for multifamily housing to be built there.
You brought up the opportunity essentially created by Act 46, and the schedule for Act 46 is, may be, may determine what we can do here.
Right.
So, you're aware of that?
Yes, yeah. Living in Cabot, I'm all too well aware of Act 46.
So, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know who's going to be on the new board, Peter, but...
Me.
I don't think, thanks. I, I don't see this as a huge, I mean, the board's going to want, the new board would want to have some issue in it, but I also think they would look at, you know, what does this board think of it and support that. I'd be very positive.
Well, I'd like to think that, I just don't, don't know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm right where Chris, that's the advantage that you saw, Chris, you know, kids and a way of maybe supporting, getting more playing fields. Those are, those both are great things that we need, so I'm more than willing to, I would want to think about it and see it, see it through. I'd want to talk to our council down at Scott Cameron's office and just say, what do you see, what do you, I've talked to him about timeline for property transfers and all that, so I think it's something that we'll get into that new board, but I don't think it stops us from talking about these things right now either, so.
Yeah, it's a good place for it to start.
Excuse me.
And we're certainly aware that you've got all kinds of, you know, issues that you've got to address as part of this that are more central to the educational mission, and so, you know, we're here ready to help out however we can, participate in whatever discussions make sense to you, when they make sense.
There are also some pieces of this that have to do with a town center designation?
Yes, something that we started on two and a half years ago, is there's a state program that allows the state to designate new town centers, which is sort of akin to their designated downtowns and designated village centers. There are only two that have been done in the state, one in South Burlington, one in Colchester, and we approached the town, meaning the mall owners, about this two and a half years ago when I started working with them. We had several meetings with the state. They were encouraging, but there were things in the town's town plan and zoning ordinance that needed to be updated to incorporate some statutory language. The town plan, as you know, was re-adopted, a new one in August, and the zoning is up for a new zoning ordinance in March. Assuming that that goes forward, we'll, we, when I say we, I've been sort of dispatched by the mall owner to help the town with the application, and so, Tom Fedelski and Dana Hadman, I meet every couple of weeks on this now, and will be, are preparing to file an application for that in March or April of next year. And that basically increases the town's priority for certain funding programs that there are from the state, may make a TIF district easier. If you're a developer and are trying to do residential, particularly affordable residential, it makes the development process simpler, including the Act 250 process, and generally signals to the regulatory bodies that the state believes that development in the location makes sense. We're, we've met with Chris, and one of the things we're hoping to do is incorporate the school district property and the fire department property into that. It could be up to one hundred and twenty-five acres, because one of the things you have to show is public facilities either are in the town center, or there's a plan that they will be located, relocated to the town center over time, so.
So, to clarify, the town plan was updated to meet your...
Yes, yeah, no, it was...
All requirements.
Yeah, it was, it had to be done for all kinds of other reasons, but as part of that.
But at that time, we did that.
Yes, yes.
And zoning still needs to be done, but it's headed in that direction?
Yes, in fact, they were well along in the zoning, and then sort of put that on the back burner, because the deadline came up for, under the state law, that the town plan had to, you know, be revisited and outdated. So, yes, the zoning, I think just in the last week, the planning commission took its final action, and I believe that public hearing now is maybe the twentieth of December.
Great time for a hearing. The other thing is that the fire department's land belongs to the school.
Okay, that came...
That's a lease.
Okay, that came up the other day.
Sure about that.
So, that's another issue you're going to have to look at. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, again, just having uses like that in the town center are some of the boxes that we have to check off on this application.
I don't think that's a deal breaker in any respect. I mean, it's beneficial to everyone to have it there, which was the intent when it, when it happened. But it's a long-term lease. I think it's a ninety-nine-year lease.
The other thing about this strip of land that goes all the way out to Payne Turnpike is it potentially provides either a secondary means of ingress to the school, or actually a different primary means of ingress to the school further away from the stoplight. I think you guys are even, you know, certainly well aware of how that traffic can back up there now, so.
All right, well, I thought the time was right to bring this to the, to the whole board. We've expressed interest. I think it's important for the town and for the mall developer to know that we are interested and open to further discussion on this. I think we have that from our discussions here. Are there any other questions for, for Michael?
Okay, thank you for the time tonight, for the interest that the two chairs have shown before on this, and hopefully something works out that everybody's happy with.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
You're welcome to stay. We have an exciting agenda.
And I told my wife I'd take her out for dinner, just finished her hair.
Priorities, I guess.
Okay, I'll leave those with you if you want.
That's great, thank you for that.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion on that one? And Bill, hopefully you made a note on the fire department thing. That's something that I just learned.
Just learned that from Peter, too. That's one of the things that, it's one of many things. We talked, you saw some of this on Friday. I'm going to be covering some of the things on that. That's why I asked for that extra piece of agenda.
Okay.
Just as a footnote to that, we talked about institutional memory last week. That was designated as police and fire.
Okay.
And police and fire had a falling out, so they never, never got into that.
Things like that never happen.
But we thought that would be really good, adjacent to the school.
I think it is, too. It's actually a great place. It makes our only school that has evacuation places by foot.
And it was far better than the alternative, which probably would have been McDonald's.
Yeah, yeah.
As much as I guess.
All right. Let's go back up now to 1.3 Public Comments and Correspondence. Any, any public comments or correspondence anyone wants to address? All right, 1.4 Future Meetings. We have our January fourteenth meeting here, February twentieth Carousel Meeting at U32, and I'll also note, is it January ninth, Bill, is the organization?
Yeah, I was going to go through all of that, Chris. I brought, I brought a, one of my handouts I gave was an updated timeline from Friday to today.
Okay.
There's, I actually put a couple more things on there than were on there on Friday.
Okay.
Things are becoming clearer, well, somewhat clearer as the days go by.
All right. 2.1, the approval of the minutes. So, everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes, and if so, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I would need to approve the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? A little second, no, it wasn't here for them. All right. Any revisions to the minutes? Then, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, abstentions.
Abstaining.
Carl abstaining, he was not here, and motion carries, the minutes are approved. 3.0 Discussion Agenda, 3.1 Budget Draft Number Two, Bill?
So, before we go into the actual budget draft that was in your packet on page five, I wanted to give you some contextual information, which I handed out tonight. One of the things that you've seen every year, and it was in your packet, but I brought you a legal one that's a little bit bigger, not much bigger, of what, it's called the, we use this as the budget, final budget analysis from this current school year by budget functions. That's what goes down on the left-handmost column, so you have the function areas of the budget, and we're able to look at this across schools. And everything that's up top, we start to look at enrollment, square footage of buildings, meals per day, number of child, children that receive IEP services, and enrollment pre-K. So, those are all kind of some demographic data, and as you look at this information, you'll be able to see that across the schools, but specifically, you have Berlin, where it has a Berlin name, that top of that column. The next column to the right, down below under the budget categories, is the percentage of the overall budget, and the next one to the right is the cost per equalized pupil. So, you'll see that, for example, Berlin's expenditure budget for this year is $3.5 million, which results in a $17,801 per equalized pupil. Is there, I don't know, Peter, you haven't, we've had this for a couple of years, but we need to put a really bold line by the callous, to the left of the callous column, where it says callous, that's all Berlin information there.
Over here.
Yep, so, anything that's colored yellow means it's a low compared to all six schools, and if it's green, it's high. And some of the things this year, because of the way we're assessing them across schools, especially superintendent and special education assessments, we didn't even rank them green or yellow, because they're done by equalized pupils. Sometimes, the green is good, and sometimes the green is bad, and same for yellow. It's just a way of asking questions. It's to help, this sheet is to refine your questions, not necessarily you want all yellow or you want all green. It's just a way of saying, how do I kind of look at what's happening for services and cost per budget? Peter, especially if I'll say to Chris and Carl, because you've seen this other years, slow me down if I'm going too fast. I give this to you as information. Down at the bottom, you'll see other statistical information. A lot of it's operation by plant or special education costs, where you'll see what we divide it by. For operation of plant, whether it's capital fund or debt and capital and operation of plant, we do that by square footage of the building. And then, where you see the food services, it's the support per day, per meal, and then this pre-K is cost per pre-K enrollment, so it's just divided by the pre-K students.
The other green line corresponds with, the other green one up above, huh?
Yep. The special education cost per sped student is divided by the number of sped students that you had up above, and the student transportation's per equalized pupil, I'm not, that, there's not much of a variability. I mean, it's less than $20, $21 from the cost at Dode to the cost here in Berlin. So, sometimes the range isn't that great, and it's not worth looking at the greens and yellows. Sometimes there's a big range, so you kind of have to look into the numbers as well. And then, way over at the right, we try to give it to you by the super, the whole supervisory union. So, if you, the furthest right column way over, you'll see that, and you can see what the costs are by the supervisory union. So, this is this year's current budget. So, I expected people to ask me, what's it look like for next year? So, you'll see an eight and a half by eleven that I gave you that has something that looks like this right here, where I took some key figures for the budget, for this current year's budget. That's the top table, and the bottom table is draft one, all draft ones, and U32's already in draft two, and you're getting your draft two tonight, all the draft one budgets for this, for FY20. So, that's what the bottom is, and this is where you have some tax rate information there as well. So, again, you'll see that we have the total expense budget. Each have offsetting revenues. Those are revenues that get you down to what's the local, what's called the local education spending. This is what gets to your tax rate. On the top table, on the bottom table, you'll see equalized pupils again. And then, on the bottom table, you'll see a differential of what's happening in equalized pupils for this year for Berlin. We went down eight students.
Sorry, where's that line?
I'm on the bottom, I'm on the fifth one down, Chris, where it says EP change.
EP change.
Equalized people change.
Yep, see it.
Minus eight.
Got it.
And then, you have your local spending per equalized pupil, so in this current budget you have in front of you is $18,117, where last year it was $16,892. Okay?
What's the big jump there?
Well, equalized pupils and an increase on your overall, your increase in your budget, which is mainly HR, because we, the stuff that was below the line that Aaron wanted to talk about tonight is not in draft one.
Okay.
Okay? And then, you see a calculation above and below the threshold for spending, where you get into the penalty zone, and for every dollar over that you need to raise in taxes over the penalty threshold, you have to raise two for the one that you need. So, this in the black means that Berlin's $307,000 away from the penalty threshold in overall budget expenditure.
Away as in above?
You're below.
Below.
You're below it. You're below that threshold. Black is good, okay? If you go to callous, you'll see there are $9,000 above the penalty threshold for spending. EMEs, you see, is fifty-two, $152,000 below, RUMNE's $103,000 above, Dode's $29,000 above, U32 is $211. Overall, the whole district is 520. When you do those pluses and minuses, the district's 528,000. district's $528,000. No matter what our governance is going to be, whether we merged or not, next year, the entire Washington Central Supervisory Union will be over the threshold in spending. All districts. Whether we were one or six separate.
You mean on the FY '21 budget?
In the FY '21 budget, we would be. Okay? That's our forecasting. That's with a... Sorry, I forgot to add this caveat. That would be with a level funded budget, not level service, level funded, where we know healthcare and salaries are probably going to go up. So then what you see down below is if... The next line is if there's any penalty for excess spending. The town tax rate with CLA from last year, if there is an emerge. Okay, so for Berlin, that's $1.694. If it were merge with CLA from last year, and under what's ordered... Actually, let me say the next line up. The merge equalized, education equalized tax rate, if it were one district right now in these first draft budgets, would be $1.79. You see how it's blank all the way over to the district?
Mm-hmm.
So then we said, what would it be if we applied CLA, because different towns have different CLAs, what would be the merge tax rate? And then we have the change, draft one, to the... So we're looking at last year's tax rate to a merge tax rate. You can see the changes this year. So increase of 5.4 cents for Berlin, an increase of 3.1 for callus, a decrease for East Montpelier of 3 cents, a decrease for Middlesex of 11 cents, DODI, 4 tenths of a cent increase.
So I've heard a lot of different numbers, Bill.
Yeah.
This doesn't make sense to me. Not that it should. Not that I have any great understanding of it. I thought, you know, the things that I've heard most frequently are, you know, East Montpelier's taxes are going to go down, towns without debt, their taxes are going to go up. How does that... How does that mesh with this here?
Well, because you're looking at... People were only talking about debt that were doing that, Chris. You have to look at overall ed spending. And our debt is not the majority of our education spending.
Yeah.
It's very tiny. So therefore, it's really based on how much you spend per equalized pupil. Look at the equalized pupil spendings for each town in their budgets right now. That's what drives taxes.
So the numbers that hit me when I saw this chart, this one, not the one you just gave, is East Montpelier has a few more students than Berlin.
Yeah.
Yet originally, over 450,000 more in overall education spending. And that isn't debt, but it certainly is cost per pupil that's going to be distributed throughout the newly merged district.
Yeah.
And it struck me that that's a lot more than the... I mean, their debt payment for their $10 million bond is probably 200 or 300,000 a year, right?
It's about... It's about 590 now.
Oh, is it?
It's coming down each year. Maybe 560. I'd have to go look at it.
I was going to say that that $400,000 difference means probably more.
And let me tell you what changes...
To the district than their debt does.
And what changes it faster for them is not their expenditure change, but the change in equalized pupils. You asked, why did it jump so much for Berlin? That eight pupil difference decrease, remember, that's the divisor. And you're under 200, so you changed your pupils by 4%.
Yeah. So I'm still looking at those numbers that you're talking about, Carl. So in the green and yellow sheet you handed out.
Right.
The per pupil spending for East Montpelier is 20,600. And here we are at 17,800.
And that's this current budget year.
Yep.
So go to next year. Go to the sheet I gave you, the other one that has all the numbers on. Not that one.
Not this one.
All right? So now go look at local ed spending per equalized pupil.
Yep. And ours is going... We're jumping there.
Yep. And remember this, the major... We have over than 50% of our students are at U32, whether I look at the town of Berlin or the whole supervisory union. That union has that equalized per pupil. So what it does, and this is what it does, that, you know, when we... If we look at the overall tax rate, right, if you've got 50... About 50% of you, you're already equalizing your... I should use a different word. You're leveling your tax rate a little bit between the five towns, because you've got over half your students being educated at U32 under that cost per pupil of $18,921. So the... With that there already, and we know that we have more than 50% of our kids there across the SU and in Berlin, there's only one town that doesn't have 50%, greater than 50%, and it's Middlesex right now. They... You already have some softening, might be the best. I'm not sure what the right average... I'm trying not to use equalizing, but we have some equalizing of the rate, the tax rates. And so you have... Tax rates in Vermont are not driven... They're driven by spending per equal... Local ed spending per equalized pupil. That's the way tax rates are done.
Right. End of the day, to sum it up in a less confusing way, though, East Montpelier is certainly gaining an advantage.
How about Middlesex, Carl? They have a higher cost per pupil. They're above the threshold spending, and they're getting 11 cents down.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, a lot of it's hard to make sense of.
Well, it's because of that. They... Last year decided to spend right up to the threshold.
Yep.
This year, they have 103,000 if they were their own district. If they're not, they're below the threshold, because the whole SU can be below the threshold.
You know, I don't know if it's the per... One of the unforeseen consequences, but as a board member and a Berlin parent and a Berlin community member, the thing to do for our community and our students is to jack spending. And I'm not advocating this because this frustrates me. I'm not advocating it. But the thing to do was to have more improvements when it was time for our bond and a bigger bond, and more spending right now. Because if we got up to that threshold level, we might have two extra FTEs here at Berlin that are going to be paid for and distributed throughout the SU. And that would provide school-wide improvement and better education for the children of Berlin. It's sad that... Maybe that's the purpose of the law. I don't know. Maybe it was a purpose I never saw, that it puts you in situations where...
It allows you to ask this question and ask to one board, how do you want to use your resources?
So is equity, if East Montpelier students are at a higher proficiency rate, taking some of that $400,000 that they decided as a community to spend for maybe... And giving those two extra teachers to...
It's a good question for the new board.
DODI.
It's what should be asked about the new board, is where do you want to put your resources? I just finished... Chris, I think has heard this from me. I finished... Just finished writing a paper about rural superintendent and leadership, and that one of the most powerful things for causing student improvement is putting your resources to where the kids that... For the kids that need it, and where the school performance is.
Which is right here.
Right now, yeah.
Couple of math coaches.
And that's what Aaron has in the budget. I mean, he's not putting it in. I want to talk about it. So that gives you some big... I wanted you to have some big context, because I know people are going to be asking this. I mean, this is going to go to... These budgets are going to go to the transition board and then the new board. So I said, Miles will start putting together something like this. So in the new... We kept the budget the same. We have been able to figure out the... From draft one to draft two, we've gotten more precise on staff turnover changes and on money that we put in the budget for anticipated movement across the index. So if someone's getting another degree, we've been able to put that in here. With that all said, the net impact on taxes, and I'd be glad to go through each of these lines. I'm not going so fast that you don't... You don't have time to ask questions. We also are sure of the Washington Central assessments. So those are exact numbers. Now, they... Last time, they were estimated at 3%. So the total for that is an increase of $94,628 to the budget from FY '19, this current year, or a 2.7% increase. And there really haven't been any changes up there. What Aaron wanted to be, and he wanted to be here tonight, and I'd be glad to try to call him and get on his cellphone on speakerphone, wanted to talk to you about a couple of things that are happening that we anticipate. And so I can go down through those, and then if we want to do some
Sure.
Detail calling.
Yeah.
So we anticipate, we think there's a retirement coming. We don't have it in hand. So we wanted to let you know that that's about a $16,000 change... Increase. We have one teacher here on a one-year. So if we replace it with that one, that teacher's here on a one-year contract. Because we have another teacher, you may remember from last year, Michelle Turkot, took a year leave of absence to go do some work and be with her family for a year. We're also anticipating that about 0.2 of our school-wide program funding is going to get cut. 0.2 of an FTE, which is about $24,000, federal grants are going down. There's some instructional support and programs, books and supplies. The... Aaron initially came to us with about 15,000, but we were able to find money from this year's budget that's... There's about 8,001 time costs for things that don't happen every year. But there's some things in the... Here in the library and in the guidance materials that should be put in annually. That's about 7,000. And then he did add an extra math interventionist. This assumes that that 0.2, that we get 0.2 in funding through a different way of consolidated federal grants, but that we have an extra math interventionist coach... Interventionist, I'm sorry, at 76,000. And we're seeing a real uptick in our pre-K population. We could open up a third section of pre-K. We have so many kids that... In town.
Here.
Yeah, in Berlin. Which is great. That looks good for future population.
Mm-hmm.
That's really exciting. As you all know, our kindergarten was really light this year coming in, but we could have a sec... We could have a third section right now, and we definitely see that going into next year.
Is that all Berlin pre-K?
All Berlin.
Are there some pre-K coming?
Yeah, all Berlin. We've usually had like one or two that comes from another town. But we could have, with what we're seeing in child find and what we're being told about for folks that are interested for next year, between basically this year's three-year-olds and this year's two-year-olds, so it would be our three and four-year-olds for next year, we could have three sections. I will tell you that also the student need in the pre-K is going up, and the supports they need. So this is...
What does that mean generally?
That means that students that will need services, whether it's IEP, 504, we see that happening. And that's just a continuation. I'm just telling you it's getting greater. I've been telling you every year it's getting greater, what we're seeing from the societal issues. It's just... We just... It gets earlier and earlier. We're seeing that as well. So we wanted to bring you all those price tags. We weren't expecting, you know, all that, but to say, these are the things we've been thinking about. These are the things we were talking about. Aaron and I had this conversation. We thought it was good to have this conversation with the board. His priority is... We kind of put him in a priority level there of things that seven... Although the 7,000 is small in the third, but we tried to rank that in a prioritization piece, because we just see that stuff coming.
And can you speak to this, Bill, or should we try to get Aaron on the line about the need for the math interventionist?
Yeah, I mean, we've been saying in the supervisory union and here that math is... Needs to be our primary focus. We'd like to have Kim Ferone. Some of it's our class structure with the multi-grades. We teach math in a singular grade, so Kim's been doing some of that. The reason to take 0.2 of her out of the grant, and so she can do more of that and be more flexible. But we also need to have the math interventions for students at a younger grade, so we can get kids back onto track more quickly. I know they're not serving, and I don't have the actual numbers, Aaron probably would, all the kids that could serve with Kim Ferone's time by herself for math interventions. So it's supporting the straight-grade math teaching and taking 0.2 out of Kim's current position that's funded by grants gives us that flexibility, because the grants won't allow her to be a classroom teacher. She can do interventions and coaching. And then the other part would... We'd have the other person focus on interventions.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And it's kind of what Carl was saying earlier. If we had a math... Another math interventionist, we can provide more of those supports earlier on for kids. And we're just kind of having to make some tough choices in that. It's not that they're not getting interventions. It's just it's easier to provide more with more folks at the helm. I think I'm stating an obvious piece, but... And I'd be glad to give them a call, so let's see if I can get them.
Hard to disagree with that. I mean, having heard it from Aaron and at U32 as well.
So would that be... I'm trying to catch back up here. Would that be a fourth interventionist?
That would be two literacy and two math. And we are... I mean, our literacy scores are starting to turn, as you saw back in the October... The October meeting. Hey, Aaron, it's Bill.
Yeah, how's it going?
Good. I've got you on speakerphone. I'm here with Peter, Chris, and Carl.
Hey, everybody.
Hi, Aaron.
I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more. I've introduced the budget and the budget considerations down at the bottom. But we were talking about the additional 1.0 math interventionists. And I was wondering if you could give some more details about, you know, the data that you're using and the sourcing that that... Why you see that and what that will gain us.
Sure, absolutely. And first, I apologize for not being there tonight. Yeah, I've obviously taken a lot of consideration into, you know, what I'd be proposing. And back in October, when I presented the October update, having not only looked at the data, but just being a new set of eyes, being your new principal, and really kind of seeing what the needs are. I mean, I think we've all seen that the data is showing that we're struggling in math. One of the things that I also recognized strictly for Berlin is, you know, just some of these scheduling pieces and the structure of positions and scheduling and, you know, how we're providing not just intervention, but classroom, that tier one, tier one service. And looking at Kim Ferone's position, she was, when I came on board, looking like she was just pretty thin, not only doing some... Trying to do some classroom instruction, but also the intervention piece, which in my opinion, you know, we have two reading interventionists, which is great. We have a, you know, one additional math interventionist slash regular ed funded classroom teacher. And it just wasn't working. We made some schedule changes for her to help with some tier one. And I recognize that with those needed changes, we were even more lacking with math intervention. So considering that, we are... I'm hoping we might make some changes with King's position, which has impacted budget, and knowing that that will reduce some of her intervention time, and seeing that we have tremendous need for math instruction and support for kids, that I was hoping that we might look at. uh, instruction and support for kids, that, uh, that I was hoping that we might look at some additional intervention support and really kind of make the whole system of tier-one and, and tier-two really work, really work well. So, I hope that gives some insight into, into the, the thought and reasoning. Um, it definitely comes down to the data. I know it's, it's the area that we're struggling in, in the most, so, in my opinion, we wanted to put some resources where the data's showing that, uh, we need it.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron?
No, thank you. I think that confirms what you told us previously and what we heard at U thirty-two recently. Hope we can do it.
Yeah. Are there other questions about other items that are there on the bottom for Aaron? He, uh, Aaron, I talked about, you know, trying to free up Kim, that point-two, and then that we anticipated retirement, and if that were to happen, that's what the staffing changes were. And then I explained the pre-K section, that we're just seeing a lot more kids, uh, that we could do a third pre-, pre-K section.
Yeah, I, I can talk to any of that if you want me to.
Why don't you give a couple mi-, why don't you give a couple, a paragraph to each? How about that?
Sure, sure. So, um, yeah, the pre-K piece, um, um, I've met with pre-K teachers, um, Katie and, and Beth, and, uh, we started to meet with Kelly Bushy, just because we were seeing a, um, an increase in students coming into pre-K, with, with high, high needs, um, special education needs. And right now, the, the ratio is much higher, well, let me back up, is, is higher than, um, you know, in terms of more special needs than, than quote-unquote regular ed. And, uh, just seeing that we have, um, a lot of services in place, and knowing that we have a few students that are, you know, on a waiting list, and, um, just seeing that, this, this, this feels kind of like you're up here, just through our education, there's more and more need for, for, for pre-K. Um, so we've been kind of brainstorming, how, how could we possibly support kids, uh, and still kind of work within some of the parameters of, of, of room space, of, you know, potential staffing, um, and, uh, kind of putting our heads together. We even met with, with, with Jen as well, Jen Miller, and, um, kind of felt a balance might be to propose another half, half-day session that is, that is school-based. Um, so that was some of the reasoning for that. Um, and though I forget the other two things you mentioned, you mentioned the retirement.
Yep, I did that one, so that one's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, it's not pretty self-explanatory.
And then-
No turnovers. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, and then the instructional support program, books and supplies, you want to just give a little bit about that?
Sure, yeah. So there was a little bit of, 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 um, an increase in what I've, what I've recognized in talking to staff this, this fall. I mean, back in October, I did some, uh, some, some, um, had some conversation with the teachers, and, uh, there's a few, there's a few things that, that have been, um, kind of neglected. So, one, one area is, is, uh, some of the, some of the music instruments. Kate and I have been, you know, kind of piecemealing some things together, um, and, uh, just having, going over some of the, the actual instruments that we have in the, in the band room. Um, we're, we're, we're just getting by with a couple of, like, the big bass drum is, is pretty shot. Uh, the snare drums are, are not in great shape. Um, so there was a little bit of an increase for that. And the other, I guess, bigger particular item, if you will, is, is some of our science material. So, this past fall, we also cleaned out the attic, or the second floor of, of the school, and, uh, some people just did a great job of, of going through everything. And, um, we were sorting through the, the science materials, and, uh, they don't, you know, they're sold, they don't match our, what we're expected to teach at, at the different grade levels with, with the new next-generation science standard. So, there was a little bit of an increase just for the third and fourth to start with in, in that area. Um, and, uh, we'd also talked about looking at some guidance support, and, uh, we're not able to just pull some of that off this year, but that was another, um, part of the supply line that was, that was, um, suggested.
Yeah, great. Any questions for Aaron?
Nope, but I think, um, while he's on the line, maybe, um, trying to understand what, what are the consequences if we don't add another pre-K section?
Did you hear that, Aaron?
Yeah, consequences if we don't add another pre-K. I think, um, I think we were trying to balance supporting kids, you know, supporting Berlin kids that are coming into, into school at that level. Obviously, we can limit, we can limit it to what we have. We have, uh, some days we have, we have quite a few adults in that pre-K room, only because we have, like, OT needs or, or speech needs. You know, we have a couple kids that require a one-on-one, um, some, uh, severely handicapped kiddos, so, you know, and we're also required to not only have the teacher, but regular, 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 a parent educator through regular ed, uh, in there as well. So, as they have quite a few adults, we have a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, kids with needs coming on, on, on those days. So, I guess it would just kind of still be, you know, we, we service these kids, it would, um, I think another philosophy is to try to not have a pre-K with a lot of kids with high needs. I think more the philosophy is to try to balance with, um, regular ed, if you will, students, just to try to bring some level of, of, I don't know, normal, normalcy to the atmosphere, I guess. So, just trying to kind of create what is a good scenario for, for kids at that age.
Yeah, I, 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 I've done the actual just pure number calculation. If you think about the Act one-seventy, one-sixty-six vouchers, nine is the place. If you have nine kids in a classroom, if it, and I-
Yeah.
I'm not talking about educational outcomes, I'm talking just finances here. It's more cost-effective to have the classroom at nine. Below nine-
Yeah.
The vouchers are more effective. And that's without looking at from an educational outcome piece, but just a dollar and cent piece.
Right. Well, the educational outcome piece is, I guess, kind of where we are trying to find that balance. Um, right now, we're licensed for fifteen kids in a, in a session, and we're at fifteen each. So it's, uh, you know, we're at max right now, and like I said, some, some on a waiting list. And even if, and then we're kind of projecting into next year, you know, same, same thing, you know, full, um, we do have, obviously, a few kids that are going on to kindergarten that would be, you know, that have needs, but, um, just seeing, um, I was, was just at a meeting last week at the family center of a, of a new kiddo coming, coming in, um, turning, turning three soon, or four. And, uh, so, not slowing down, I guess, in that sense.
Yeah, no, I agree with your educational outcome analysis, Aaron, a hundred percent. I just wanted to, so the board understood the numbers when you look at it from a number, a budgetary piece.
So, we have thirty currently?
Yep. And we have some on waiting list after that. Do you remember how many are on the waiting list, Aaron?
Um, it was around five. But see what happens is some people will just didn't want to be on the waiting list, and they'll try to find something else. So these are people that, I mean, you know, waiting list is, is, uh, um, it's pretty few and far between that we have kids leaving, and then we call somebody on the waiting list. I'm not sure if it's even happened this year, so, you know, sometimes they say, well, there's a waiting list, and people even bother wanting to be on the waiting list, but it's, it's, it's like five kids that are, that are on the waiting list, from my recollection.
And there's some indication that there will be more next year?
Yeah, what, yes. And what we do look at, and Aaron, tell me if I'm wrong, but, you know, as you said, there's other kids that, we always get, seem to get a few more kids that come into kindergarten that didn't even go through our pre-K system, which I'd like to get everybody in, or even, you know, just to let us know they're here. Um, so we always have a couple of those, and we have, you know, from what I remember Kelly telling me, Aaron, and you may have told this to me too, but we think the two-year-old numbers are as high as our four-year-olds, if not higher.
Yeah. Yeah, I look back, uh, one of the things I did find was the, um, and the, the last couple of annual reports, um, I know it's not exactly accurate, but just, you know, the birth in Berlin, they always kind of tell you how many kids are. And I think the sixteen and seventeen, maybe with fifteen and sixteen, uh, lists are, are, are the size. I don't know how many exactly, but, uh, they're there.
And the percentage of students in these classes with special needs may go up next year?
Well, that's what Aaron was just telling you about of family he was at just the past week, that he was in a meeting that way. That's a, those are our trends. I don't have hard data on that, Peter, but, uh, you know, we're seeing that needs of students are still going up, and it's getting younger and younger.
Yeah, definitely. Definitely. I'm just going to use the word trend. The trend seems to be that happening, um, and not, not really, you know, slowing down, if you will.
Do we have a cost for our third session?
So we do, right, that forty-five thousand. We put a second session into Calis. It costs us, because you have to have a teacher and a parent educator for fifteen kids. You have to have two adults there the whole time, and to put that second, put that second session in this, this calendar year, because this happened after the budget at Calis, and they use fund balance this year to cover, was forty-five thousand. So I said, let's just put down forty-five thousand. We know that that's in the ballpark to do it.
You said a teacher and a parent educator for fifteen.
Right.
If we had a third session, we might have fewer.
We might have fewer, but you have to, you have to have two adults in the room at all times.
Okay.
It's a pre-K standard. You can't have, you can't, can't just have it one adult.
Okay. Well, three-nines is twenty-seven, and we're already at thirty, right?
So.
Okay, anything else for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate you being, accommodating for me today.
No problem.
I understand.
Well, I'll talk to you tomorrow, Aaron.
All right.
Bye.
Great, thanks a lot.
So you're looking for some direction from us tonight?
Yes, I am.
So we're looking at a seven-point-five percent-
That's if we took everything there, it would be seven, it would be seven-point-five. Which I understand that that's really high. I, I, Lori, Lori put it down there, showed me this sheet in the first draft, that first, you know, draft of this report. I'm like, I don't like that number, Lori. She goes, well, you said the, you and Aaron said to price all these things out. I'm like, yeah, I guess we did tell you that, so. So those are there. I, I, you know, I'll tell you, I, and I'm not saying this to devalue any of them. I didn't expect to get all that, but I wanted to kind of bring a menu of our thinking, um, our thinking towards resources for kids, um, and to know what we're trying to, what Aaron's really trying to lead the school through, and talking about how can we better support kids in Berlin?
If it is a trend, that's something that will have to be considered for years to come. That's the way it works. Typically, it's a roller coaster.
Mm-hmm. I must have missed it. Can you help me understand again why this, the retirement results in a cost for us?
I can explain that to you. So, um, without trying to put out too much information on the staff member in public session, you could have a staff member that has a lower education level, although they have many years, they'll, they'll, they'll tap out on the, we have a staircase for different levels of education, for how many years that you keep getting increases, if you looked at the salary index.
Mm-hmm.
And there may be a differential in benefits.
So you're anticipating a hire at fifteen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand?
I'm anticipating to replace that person. We've been very pleased, and now I am pulling out a staff member in public meeting, but of our person that's a one-year replacement right now. So that's what that cost is. You could tell me to re-advertise and rerun and give me a top level for that, for that.
That's how you have a specific number, okay.
Yep. I've been in her classroom once. Aaron's been in her classroom a lot. That's, he's doing an awesome job of getting out to people's classrooms and giving feedback, and he's really-
He's been here.
Yeah, he's, he's all over the place. He's doing a great job.
So that's, you, you said these are in order of priority?
Yeah, that, and try, yes, because we really think if we can free up Kim out of some grant funding-
Mm-hmm.
We can give her more flexibility to do her job based on what's coming up. When, when she doesn't have that flexibility, because the grant restricts what she can do, it just ties her hands and Aaron's hands with the building. If, if you did that, but said, we're not going to give you a math interventionist, it doesn't mean we might be able to use that other grant funding some other way to help interventions around here. I just don't know the answer to that right today. Because trying to hire someone for point-two is really hard to do, especially an interventionist. They, they can pretty much choose where they want to work in this state. The jobs are out there.
And we're, we're looking at this budget under the assumption that this is a recommendation to the new board?
To the transition board, which then we'll recommend. That's why I want to talk about the dates at, at the end here of tonight, of like what's on our agenda for us, for the Berlin board.
Yep.
And how much more work we do here, because the transition board's going to start working on January ninth.
Are fund balances available to us for any of these items?
They could be. They could be, but just remember you're making a double hole a year down the road. Because if, if it's operational, something you might find, I'm just going to use easy numbers here. If something was ten thousand dollars in operation, you took it out of fund balance, in two years, it'll be a twenty-dollar, twenty thousand dollar hole.
Yeah.
So I get that.
Well, in the case of early ed, it's, uh, if, if it's a trend, that would definitely happen.
Yeah.
Not a one-time occurrence. Are, are we, uh, able to limit the numbers of students in pre-K?
We do right now, because of the waiting list, because we have to stop at fifteen stu-
Can we limit it below fifteen?
You can. I wouldn't suggest it. I don't think it really-
Obviously, there's some rationale for-
I wouldn't suggest it. I think, I think that they're limited at fifteen for the top. That's what their license form.
And remind me, Bill, there's not a revenue side to pre-K?
There's not at all.
No, in the state.
We get our point-four-two for, for, towards our equalized people.
Yep.
But that's what we get. Remember, it, it's one of the things, and I've been guilty of encouraging this, so to think of revenues and expenditures, but really our equalized tax, we get all the money we set that, that's adopted by the voters for the budget.
Mm-hmm.
The state then turns around, says your taxes is this, or this, because you-
Yep.
Your spending for equalized people is that.
So, let me be naive for a minute, the, the state has mandated pre-K, is that-
That's correct.
And, but they, and they do fund us, do they fund us to the extent of K through six?
No.
What are you saying?
No, it's point-four-two of a, of that-
Of the equalized student.
Of an equalized student. And I-
Based on some formula that they came up with?
Yeah.
How about the, uh, special ed?
So we don't get special ed components for pre-K. We don't get any educational support for special education for pre-K, where we do get reimbursement in our other, in our other grades.
Yeah.
Carl?
I'm still kind of catching up on the budget here, but, uh, I don't know. Again, I'm torn. I feel like, um, Berlin's fiscal responsibility is, is coming back to bite us, but also I don't want to, add an obscene amount to the budget that gets voted down when something potentially happens where the merge is delayed, or there's potential for, um, better circumstances for the merge, so. Act forty-six is, is cloud- Act forty-six is, is clouding my vision on this, is what I'm saying.
It's hard not to have that happen.
Yep. I totally understand.
Easy to say, well, we'll pay for it out of the fund balance, let them worry about it, you know, a year from now, but. Let me ask you this, Bill, in other elementary schools in the district, do they all have pre-K?
Everybody has pre-K. We have one section at DODI.
With how many of them?
Uh, fifteen, and they've wrapped around with all-day care, just as you have here. Berlin and DODI and East Montpelier are three schools that have been able to, oh, no, Calis has two, they don't do that.
Are there any with nine or ten? That if we merged?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, no, I, I have to tell you, we actually, in Calis, we have one or two students coming in from other towns, East Montpelier, we have three or four, but they could, they have enough on a waiting list now, they kind of wish that hadn't happened. Romney is full, they have a waiting list, and they have two sections.
Geographically speaking, merging doesn't help Berlin, because we're almost an island, twenty, twenty minutes away from the nearest, uh, elementary school, I think, is, you know, East Montpelier's a solid twenty minutes, I think that's probably the closest.
It's probably the closest.
Yeah, so. So it would be tough for us to share students away from Berlin or to Berlin.
Yeah, that's the only way that happens.
I think you would get-
The parents having to be going.
I know this, that you would, there are parents, whether they're from our five towns, Montpelier, Berry, south to our west, that are working in this area, they're asking us for pre-K openings, because they'll bring their kids, you know, think of wraparound care to go to work, and use this, pre-K and daycare. And that's one, I mean, it's one of the things that, um, has taken me a while to get the respect that we have for a district that we're able to provide these wraparound services, with, you know, we own Community Connections, and with CC and that work, to say, we can give you a full-day package, parents. And I think that's why we're getting so many people, frankly.
Well, I'll just say, I think I can, I can very easily support the first three, it's the, the bigger spends on the interventionists and the, um, pre-K section that are giving me heartburn. Without those, without those, we're somewhere around four percent.
Yeah.
Net increase there, uh, so with, you know, there are another three and a half percent or so to add those in. Um, I'm with Carl, in that if it's a, if it's a, this, this does not feel fiscally responsible to say this, but if it's a Berlin budget, I'm worried that it won't pass at, at that amount. If it's a, a district-wide budget, I, I think it's got a better shot, and I'm not as worried about it.
You know what, I think maybe, you just answered our question, as, from my perspective, I think the Berlin budget is what we're looking to present. I, I would say we don't include those two, but for our transition representatives, we recommend that they be put in the budget for that exact reason. Berlin, Berlin's budget would not pass with those in it.
Yeah.
And, uh, the transition budget will be, um, so big and hard to decipher, and, and with so little community ability to have oversight, that it, it might slip through.
Is that not how it's going to work, though, Bill? Are you going to, you're going to take whatever school, you know, the Berlin budget, the Romney budget, the McAllis budget, and just roll them together this first time through?
That's what the, that's what the executive committee told me to do.
And, and so-
Back in August.
So the transition board will then take a look at this as well, and could make some-
They could make changes.
Okay. But then you're, you're, you know, one-sixth of a board arguing for an increase over what the Berlin board has already asked for.
Well, that's what's going to happen from now on, anyway.
Yeah.
I think you, you know, the transition members, whoever they may be, will have, if they feel comfortable, they'll have to bring that recommendation, and for that, and with the exact explanation of why.
As a transition member, would that be a difficult case to make?
I think so.
You think it would be difficult for you to make?
Yes. To say, I have one spending decision when I'm sitting in this chair, and then, you know, when we all get together, I'm going to say, well, since we're all sharing this, I want to spend more, everybody, I, I think will say that, and we'll have to have that moment.
I think you're going, I think it's, I actually think it's going to be a good discussion, because I think it should be this discussion, and this is what I've always felt for the seven years, and I'm not saying it because I'm pro-merger, I, I know I've been very public with that, but Berlin Elementary School has not had the resources it needs to tackle the problem of where the student performance is. And so because of that, we've been, eh, we were able to put our money, we did it first with PBIS, and we saw our, our behavior improve in the school. And we, we went through some ups and downs on that, but we, we've been able to really weather that, with that work. And then we went into literacy, saying, we're going to put two literacy interventions in this, and while the S-BAC data is changing a little bit, the local literacy data is changing a lot, and that's usually how they stagger, the locals will, the local assessments will change faster than the state assessment, it will come up. So, you know, I think it's about, it's back to what I said earlier, about what research is showing, is putting the resources behind where you're trying to make the improvement. And Matt's looking across the SU, and I look at scores.
When you look across the SU at scores, is there, do you see a correlation between per pupil spending and scores?
No, I see a better correlation between free and reduced lunch and scores. Students at risk and scores.
And so Berlin with the highest free and reduced lunch?
And the highest, one of the higher IEP counts.
So is, is more staff or more spending the answer?
More staff.
Which is more spending.
Which is more spending.
But I think that is a, a case that would appropriately be made in the new structure by whomever our representatives are, without, without pause, I mean, it shouldn't be awkward or difficult, it might be difficult, simply because if someone, if the new board is truly looking at the entire consolidated district.
So S-BAC, pre-K.
They should be able to recognize that, exactly what Bill has just described, that, that Berlin has made progress where we could, uh, and our, our current needs are X and Y, and this is how we can justify them. And the fact that we can't today justify that percentage of increase, uh, to, and in, in order to expect a, a vote to pass, um, is legitimate, I think.
Because there, there should be another table that's with this, and may, maybe I'll go make it, you know, the next week. I, I thought about it, I just don't have time to do it, which is, let me put student results up here, and what's that tell you? I mean, I'm trying to make like a dashboard for board members, nothing more than an eight and a half by eleven, but that's just a dash, you know, just kind of like, where's, we can get you all the details and give you a lot more numbers, but how can I give you a dashboard, so you kind of understand, you know, those relationships?
Another option could be, I suppose, special articles. Can we do special articles, um, for the, the two components that we're currently saying we are, are wary of?
You could, um, I think in, in either governance model, you could.
I mean, that's another way to do it, and it requires then an explanation to whatever voters may show up at an informational or town meeting, um, in, you know, a brief, a brief description, probably in an article, but at least identifies, uh, what you've identified as, as the needs of the current Berlin Elementary School. Or we can just say, you know, we can't, this is our limit, and take it to the next interim board.
I guess that's what I would suggest, is that we do the budget with those first three lines included, um, and I can take direction as a member of the transition board, that we would, had this been a discussion among the full new consolidated board, we would have included, included lines four and five as well.
I think another justification is that, uh, the last time we had a six percent increase, our budget failed. Granted, it was largely due to the, the bond, but I think it was six percent plus the eight percent from the bond, as I recall.
It was fourteen.
So if the ma, that magic number was six, seven would certainly be difficult to attain approval for.
I, if you're all, if you think you've got it, Chris, as a board, then I'm, I've got that written down, I have what I need, thank you very much.
Peter?
First three items, reluctantly no on the last two.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you for all that information. Uh, board member vacancy update, I don't think we have one, I don't, I don't believe I advertised in the last, in the, I was going to do, do it on Front Porch Forum since our last meeting, I don't think I did that. I had done it the month before with no takers, I'll, I'll try, try to do that again.
I had a couple of people I was thinking about speaking with, and the thought occurred to me, why would anyone in their right mind get on the board at this point?
I keep wanting to pitch it as exciting times, why would anyone in their right mind?
He has a lot more perspective than most other people.
Well, there's something about the right-mindedness of that individualism.
That could be said anyways.
Yeah, I think, i- if it was, it would need to be somebody that had board experience, so rather than advertising, I think the right way to go would be to attempt to find a former board member that wants to serve two to three meetings.
Actually, well, it depends how many meetings you want, but we need to be able to go to December two thousand nineteen, and we need to be able to go, we definitely have to go till June thirtieth, and there'll be need one meeting after there before December two thousand nineteen to accept the audit, you know? So, it, one of the things that I am a little worried about is quorums, and I was going to bring that up some more in this board meeting schedule and all that.
You're saying regular meetings until?
Well, that's what you, you can dec, no, you can decide.
Well, it might be easier to get a quorum if, if there's really nothing for us to do, to say, okay, we have a-
We have board orders, board orders, and if there were ever needed a student hearing.
Stop in for that.
Yeah.
So board orders are monthly?
They are monthly, you do have a motion that gets you, so you don't have to do them monthly.
Okay.
I know some places, as they were in this merge, they went to bi-monthly or quarterly, I wouldn't suggest quarterly, but, um, and with, this gets more into that meeting schedule piece of, we, I need, I need to make sure we have a board majority, otherwise the select board needs to appoint to get to a majority, um, as I understand it, so that we can keep the board, this board has operations right through of all this fiscal year, which the reason why there's a meeting after June thirtieth is to accept the audit.
Yes, I imagine that's going to happen in some towns, maybe, maybe not.
U thirty-two, we have the situation where if everyone, if no one ran, we'd be, we would have a minority board, where there wasn't a majority of the seven seats.
And I have to look this up myself, but the vacancy process for school board is-
If it's within the, if it's with, a district within the town, it's the select board. I remember calling at one point, uh, or having someone call, Krista or Michelle call your office.
Yeah.
And the thought was, we didn't press her, and they said, you really want us to go after this?
And I think there's a provision in there that I, I never imagined would be used, but I think if there's nobody available, then the Secretary of State actually has some role.
You might be able to figure that out.
I'll check it out. Do you want to, do you want to go to that, Bill?
Sure, what, what I wanted to do was to start to talk about, um-
I have one of those if you want.
So, um, I enjoy being with all of you, my time is getting crunched more and more with nights, and, and Chris has heard this at the executive committee, but I'm going to start really having you decide where I show up. So it doesn't mean you can't have board meetings, and Aaron can service you as, as staff the meeting. I didn't know, once, I believe that the transition board will probably need to meet almost weekly, if not every two weeks. I'm trying to do it on Wednesday nights. I, I could be wrong, eh, we could go very fast, but in Washington Central, we tend to like to talk things a lot, so, uh, I'm anticipating that we'll have that. There are three things for them to do, and then the new board will probably meet, um, two times a month, plus some subcommittees. I'm going to suggest this to transition board, they recommend to the new board, you think about at least a finance, a facilities, and, uh, school quality, standing committee.
Okay. Can I just ask, Bill, on the transition?
Yeah.
Board, is there such, there's not any provision for alternates?
There, there is a provision, if the clerk and the chair don't want to serve, the board can name-
I mean, standing alternate?
There hasn't been one that I've seen.
Because I'm, my schedule will be tight, and Vera has just not come tonight, because she's overwhelmed with so many meetings, so. It'd be nice if we could do alternates, but I don't think the law provides-
I don't think the law provides for it, from what I saw. So what I wanted to do was say, I, I handed you this schedule right here, you all have a copy of it, it's literally, the reason it says draft, because I keep changing it every day. The organizational meeting, as you saw in the warnings, on January ninth, uh, there's a typo on here around first, uh, like I said, it's draft, the first transition board will be that same night after the district meeting, probably for organization. We figured out on Friday with the Articles of Agreement that January nineteenth, we have to post for the new Articles, Articles of Vote, people are going to vote on them. There would be a hearing on the fourteenth, and I bet the transition board will want to meet after that hearing at some point to say, where are you with the Articles? Even though the Articles Subcommittee may want to meet as well, but I think I wanted to reserve a board meeting then. The petitions for the new board and for the local board to continue are due by January twenty-eighth, I got that confirmed today from town clerks, uh, they usually like to have them before then, they like to have them around the twenty-first. And then there's the Article vote for the, the electorate vote from all five towns on the Articles, it's going, it's going to be February nineteenth. I left the ninety days in there, town meeting is on March fourth. I was looking at today to have a new board meeting somewhere around March thirteenth. I, I figured the day after the election was probably a little quick, so I had to go to the next Wednesday. And then trying to get to a budget vote for our merged district, we're looking at April thirtieth right now, which would mean a warning would have to go up between the twenty-second and the thirty-first. I know some other districts that are, uh, enforce mergers are looking like the seventh of May, or the fourteenth is the latest, but if it were to be voted down, we want to be able to come back for a second vote. So I, the secretaries of, the A, Agency of Education is suggesting get it done no later than May first. I think they're trying to get people into that April thirtieth day, uh, because since Tuesdays generally are traditional election day, I'm trying to keep with that tradition of Tuesdays.
So the town meeting, town meeting day vote will be on both boards, the existing school board-
And the merge board. Yep. I, I actually today set a meeting, just so you're aware of, I've, we've got, touched with all the town clerks, and we're meeting next week-
Yeah.
-to really like clarify-
Yeah.
-all these different parts and pieces, and, you know, does a board of civil authority need to be there for all three, and I, I think these are things that are going to go to, to, May, your office is definitely going to hit our attorney, who does our municipal pieces, and just say, let's make sure we have all these figured out, and get everything in alignment. It was actually Rosemary's great suggestion this morning, she said, Bill, I think we all need to, and come together.
Yeah.
And I said, I think that sounds like a great idea, let's do that. So, when she said that to me about eight-thirty, we said, let's put this together. I will keep adding to this timeline, and I will be sending out via email as there are significant updates, um, so all of you are in the know of just kind of what the calendar is.
Yep.
And I said on Friday, and I started doing it today, is prepping a screen, uh, an online video that I'm doing mainly for the staff, but can be used in the communities as well, just kind of, here's the process, here are the timelines. I won't know, I would say, I definitely don't know anything, but if you don't ask me the question, I can't go try to find it out. So if you have questions, please let me know, just jot in an email to me, I'll be glad to try to find it or answer it. Donna Russo Savage has been phenomenal, every time I send her a question, she's back to me within an hour or two. And sometimes that hour, it's like, I don't know yet, but we're working on a draft of that, and we'll get you that.
She must be on it full-time.
Yeah, she is.
So you said, at, at town meeting, the, there will be two votes, one for the-
Merged.
And one for the existing?
For the- For existing, whoever's terms are up.
To continue, well, for just those individuals that will become members of the merge board?
No, it's to continue, the local board needs to continue
Continue for the next year.
Through to June, to December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Really, we need for the, for the board orders, we need through June thirtieth.
Yeah.
But we're gonna need another meeting after that to accept the audit. And the way the articles were written was if the audit comes after June thir-, after December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, the new board can accept it, but we'd rather have the existing local board accept it.
Well, it just occurs to me that perhaps we should have a full board if it's possible to have one, just to be available to whatever, assist the interim board members.
So Vera is the only person whose term runs beyond town meeting day.
Oh, oh, really? So
Hers does one.
Oh, right, because
Yeah, cause there's, there's Chris, yeah.
Right, so
Yeah.
Right. Well, I guess under those circumstances, I would continue.
If, if none of us run, can, whom, that's another thing to look up, is who makes the vacancy appointments?
Well, that's why I said, my interpretation, and I wasn't talking with you, Chris, but someone from your office
Was the select board.
It was the select board does until they get to, they make just enough to get to, so you have a majority. And then let them take it from there.
Is that a possibility?
I don't see anyone else.
Yeah.
It's a possibility.
I don't want it to be me, let's say that. How about that? I think it needs to be a public body that does it. Or an electorate. So that was my piece, and you can scratch off the three, six. I, I'd like you to think about it. I am thinking right now, unless you ask for it to come back, and I'm gonna work through Chris on this, that you know, we'll be glad to, we'll share you a budget with the updates you gave us, but that in January, we don't need a lot of input on budget from the Berlin board. Am I in the right place?
I think so.
Okay.
I think we've had all the input we'll, we'll give on that.
Thank you.
All right. We're in, under the Act forty-six section. Communication building, is there something in particular?
No, I don't remember that. I, I
I know that you put something out.
I put out the Front Porch Forum out from the, when we were working on Friday. I planned to put up the video and send it to staff, but I'm gonna send it to you, and if, if one of you says, hey, that would be great to throw out in the Berlin.
Okay.
I'm gonna have it have a slant, but I'm gonna also say, if there are anyone else out there looking at this who's not a staff member, but would like more information, and look at this as an informational piece. I, I literally kinda made the skeleton of the PowerPoint today, so I'm hoping to get it filmed tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest.
Okay. And does this board have any opinion on, you know, something that should come from the board chair, any sort of things that ought to be communicated to the community? Kind of in an official capacity, I guess, from the, from the board?
I don't think it's our, our job to, to necessarily advocate, and I appreciate, Bill, although you're obviously a supporter of merger, that your communication was factual and impartial and, and wasn't a, a push piece, so I appreciate that.
I know, I know the community I serve. And it's okay, it's okay for me to have my own professional opinion, but I serve the community. So thank you. I appreciate that.
I think there is some need, and it may or may not be our responsibility, but to inform the voters, or, or at least attempt to bring them up to speed before they vote on something, because it'd make the chances of a successful vote that much greater. How, how we do that is, is, is a big question in my mind. Need to dump it all on you, Chris, but are you finding this the case in other towns, Bill, that, that the committee members and so forth, and board members are, are interested in having some kind of informational feedback to the voters?
I can say that most of, the three or four superintendents that are in the forced merger, as we are here, that I've talked to, and I'll talk to more this week, have sent out pieces to their town already, or have used the media to do that, just to say, this is where we're at. You know, basically, kind of, we're figuring it out, we'll get you more as we can, kind of what I've been doing with you. But now I wanna get it out more than that, and what went out in that Front Porch Forum. And I don't, I know of one other community right now that, that's trying to get different articles going than the draft articles that are coming from the state board. That doesn't mean there aren't more than one other, but I only know of one other that's trying to write and go for a vote before town meeting day for articles.
I think as much as anything, I've heard this at the, at the debt committee level of just a, a concern that somehow or other, all this Act forty-six information get transmitted to the voters, or, or summarize and transmitted, or in some way inform the voters prior to town meeting day, let's say, just so they have some inkling of what's, what's going on. I mean, obviously, some people have a pretty good idea of what's going on. Some people have been studying it for years, and some have, are, are totally unaware of exactly what the ramifications are, but, you know, the questions that will come up at town meeting are why are our taxes going up? You know, how's this gonna work for our children? Maybe not in that order, hopefully not in that order, but and, you know, what about, what, you know, debt committee? Why is, why are the, why are we absorbing debt from other towns essentially? And, you know, there are justifications or rationalizations or reasons for those changes, and if there's some way that we could, we could address that prior to town meeting, that would be great.
Well, I think we should. I mean, I think just for the articles vote, if we need to do a lot of positive press of, hey, we have some, we can have some input here, and this is our time to do it. That's, that's what's encouraging to me, to me about it.
Right, so I guess a key point, and, and Bill cleared it up in an email that I sent to him, is the articles of agreement that are coming from the potential transition board, we can fix, or at least make more palatable the default articles, which, which are less than palatable, I think. So we can write in some things that are absent in the default articles, or write in some things that we'd like to change from the default articles. So my understanding is, it's either our default articles, which might be a little better, but don't fix the key problems of Act forty-six and some people's opinion. But they are better than, they're the lesser of two evils, I guess.
There's opportunity.
Again, that's my opinion. I'm editorializing there, but the default articles are the, the more evil of two evils, and, and what we can do as a WCSU community is, is try to
Yeah.
soften the blow, soften the landing.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Vera mentioned some kind of informational output from, from the board to the taxpayers. It may have been primarily budget, but, you know, obviously, the budget is impacted by the new structure as well, so.
Yes, there is a lot of explaining to do to let people know that, you know, why is the school budget not there on town meeting day? Why are we electing multiple boards?
Yeah.
Oh, that was the other thing. Sorry, I forgot something. So it's, I, I guess I'd wanna know to what extent, you know, Bill, you, you're going to plan to continue to put out the, kind of, the general
I think, I think, I mean, it's like I said, when we were starting the budget process, of all yours not to be communicating, this is the one. And I'm planning to use videos, cause it's actually faster for me to produce a video with either with slides or not, or just me talking.
And use them as we want.
And then, and to put them up and say, here they are, and people wanna go look at them, instead of having to write a whole formal piece. And I also, I mean, you know, I think there's many times for us to communicate about this, and I think, you know, Chris, you, you helped me relearn this through the bond project. The more you communicate, even though it's a similar message, the more likelihood that someone's gonna hear it.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, I'm looking at town reports right now, and that's what I forgot to talk to you about, so we can talk about that somewhere here. Before we get done with the discussion, I wanna talk to you about town report.
So I'm hearing the message that more communication, the better. And I'll, I'll be glad to try to do that on Front Porch Forum.
Yeah.
Generally, and maybe through News to Know, through Corin.
I think any means is worth, worth attempting, yeah.
And town report would be another good place to put us somewhere in there.
Yeah. Why don't we finish with the forty-six and then go back? That was supposed to be part of the future.
State report.
So I will just report real quick on the Articles Committee. It's not under here, but it, you know, that is a part of Act forty-six. We we worked for a good half a day on, I guess it was last Friday, and, and several meetings before that, and I totally agree with what Carl said. It's just an opportunity to massage some of these articles and make them a little, little more palatable rather than the default article, but you know, of course, there's nothing, we've been told over and over again, nothing we can do on the, on the shared debt piece of it to, to change that in any way. So that's frustrating, but it is what it is. Got a lot of interest, real good discussions, difficult discussions about certain articles. There were a number of them where, you know, we thought the default worked, you know, as, as best as, as we could do it. So we went with the default articles, but you'll see those recommendations coming out to the transition board, and I agree, that's a place for, to try to get a lot of community input, participation on those draft articles before they go out for a vote.
Something, our actually Berlin Mall presentation made me think of a potential article to suggest any revenue from land sale by the consolidated, consolidated board will be given back to the town where the land is located in the future. I think that's one of the things, I think it's a concern Vera has, and although for Berlin specifically, I don't think it matters as much, because we are an island, we are isolated from the rest of the district. Short of building a centralized elementary school at the U thirty-two campus and closing the other five, which won't happen.
That won't happen.
Berlin will remain a school, but I know there was some concern about the property value of Berlin Elementary School, and, and if that were to ever be sold for any reason, that the land was donated to the town of Berlin for the purpose of using as an educational institution and by a family, and, from what I understand too, so I think that would be a hedge against against, you know, taking that will of that family from the town, and also, in the case of the Berlin Mall, if we happen to sell a portion of that land, that would offset some of the costs that Berlin will incur from the force consolidation.
Yeah, I think your point about the land for this, this school having been donated is, is, is important. I mean, that, at the time that the Berlin board leased the land to the fire department, there was an offer to build the town of Berlin a new school on a separate piece of property and hand us the key in, in exchange for this piece of property in this building. So the reality is that that might still be a possibility. And it's not, it's not a reality that I would recommend or be very comfortable with. But as part of my charge, I have been checking, trying to determine the value of this facility. Got some feedback from the board of listeners over the weekend and have, and requested that they attempt to give us a more current value, cause the existing value is two thousand eight. Has been reappraised since two thousand eight. And it won't help us if we are talking about a, a piece of, an edge of the property from Berlin Mall, or anything like that, 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 and that's a whole different conversation. But I think it's important to recognize that the, that the property is very valuable. Regardless, I mean, it's as valuable as it is too. The, the fact of the matter is that the Pike family gave the town the land for the old school across the road, and the old fire department that was across the road, and this facility, so they've done a lot.
Thank you Pike family.
Yes, yes. Again.
So Bill, you have some information for us under three point three point two?
I, I did a couple of months ago, and I haven't looked at it since you and I talked, Chris. I looked, I talked with John Pandolfo and Barry when they went to Trent to have the, the Barry Recfields transferred from the school to the town, and it's something that took them about three years to do. They just didn't do it this year. They had been working on it for a while to transfer all that land to Barry, to the Barry Town municipality from the school. So he said, once, working, he works with the same attorneys we do, and that getting through all the surveying and all the deed searching and all that. I don't think it would take three years. That seems a little long. But, and he said that was, some of that was due to actions that the select board needed to take for Barry Town. That took a while to get done. And so when you have two municipalities, school district and a municipality working together, sometimes things get a little delayed. I, I just don't think we could do it between now and June thirtieth.
Is
No.
If, if it involves a subdivision?
We'd have to do subdivision hearings. I don't know what the actual acreage is for hearings, whether it's different acreages for different things you have to do, and we'd have to get surveying done and all that.
Is it, is the process under Act forty-six for the transfer to happen on July first?
Yep.
I mean, that's a legal process.
That's on my to-do that for this week is to call Scott Cameron, and he has a partner who's a real estate attorney, and say, tell me what we, what we gotta get done between now.
Probably different than, it's definitely not a subdivision of the property.
It's a transfer of ownership.
The difference, it's a transfer of ownership between this, this school district to the new school district and doesn't involve the town?
I believe it doesn't belong to town, because the school district owns, from looking at the deeds ever sent, when we did this evaluation, asked the deeds to be sent, the school district owns all the land.
So you're saying it would not require a subdivision?
No, it would if we were gonna like have the playing fields and have those owned by the town, the school.
The question I'd ask the bill was, you know, if, if there, if we were to consider maybe transferring any piece of this property to the town before it becomes property of the larger district, what does that process involve, and, you know, what timeline are we looking at? And we're, it's complicated, because you're involving probably a, a vote of this board, and then a vote of the select board, and a vote of the town. And then the subdivision, and surveying and all that. But I just wanted to have that information to understand what, what that looks like. I know other, other towns are looking at that and considering that right now.
I still have a hard time believing that no local authority has to sign or, or no
So when Act sixty was, when Act sixty was ruled, and the Act sixty came from the Supreme Court, says that the state has the legal authority over all of education in the state of Vermont.
Education, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's education, no property too.
Yeah, that's education. That's pretty, education.
I think that'll be part of the law, so I'm sure it's
I'm sure. And I think that's the winnable part.
Now, we're talking right now about subdivision, subdividing, potential subdividing portions of this property for one reason or another. One of the options put on the table by the, by the debt committee was for the town to, for the school to turn over ownership to the town.
Yeah.
Now, I heard you say, Carl, that none of those, those options are possible? Is that?
Without current, without legislation.
They all require legislation, right, and they have varying degrees of promise, I guess.
I think so, or, yeah, I think that's I think so, or, yeah, I think that's what it was thought.
But they would all, any alternative to the default would require, um, something to be signed, sealed and delivered by July first?
I, I don't know. I really don't know because of, um, my mind struck between practical, be able to get things done and actually, when is it, you know, when, I think the legislature can do, can enact new laws right up until they end the session or recess the session, in this case, because it's a biennial. So.
I mean, I think, uh, prac, from a practical standpoint, any subdivision is, is problematic before July first. I mean, I think it'd be amazing to have anything other than the simplest subdivision. Maybe it's, maybe a strip to the mall, maybe under ten acres, uh, which I think would be the threshold.
I think you're right.
And, uh, you know, that would be as simple as any of the other possibilities, I guess. So, you know, that could happen, I guess.
At our, at our last meeting, I asked this board if we should explore it, if it's a possibility that we oughta, we oughta look at. I'm, I have a hard time thinking of what pieces you would carve out for the town or, or what we tend to, would stand to gain from it. It's pretty clear, you know, in the Barry Town Elementary School, there's a lot of really very public use. All the fields and tennis courts and everything.
There's the bike and the bike rack, the bike path.
The path up there and all that. I think that made sense for them. I don't know that it necessarily makes sense here. And then when we, you know, hearing what the mall developers are looking at, I think the only, I don't think there's a, uh, there's not a lot of value to that frontage back to the wetlands. So, um, you know, that would just be a, probably a, like, like trade and, you know, maybe they deed us another little piece of property or something like that, and that's just gonna go to the benefit of the school regardless of whether that's a Berlin Board decision or a district decision.
Yeah, the intent of that option of town selling, the school district selling land and buildings to the town, I'm not sure if selling is even the right word, but transferring, um, was to ensure that the assets of each town stayed within the town, the assets that were being paid for by the voters of each town. So everything would belong to the town as opposed to the school district, the elementary school district. And there would be some hardly convoluted equation to figure an annual payment.
Lease, a lease payment as well.
To, to, um, I guess from, from the state. The taxes, it's a combination of taxes, well, no, the money from the state, but part of it would go to the town or the, or the, uh, bricks and mortar. And I'm not sure that, I, I think that's probably one of the less viable of the five options. They're all pretty complicated.
Do you wanna transition into that since we're on the subject?
Well, I guess we're sort of doing that, yeah.
Three point three point four, the Debt Committee recommendation.
I could summarize to say that, uh, that the Debt Committee had no consensus, no consensus of agreement on any one of those articles, any one of those proposals to recommend. And I think it's fair to say that they were all attempts to, um, if not equalize, then minimize the impacts on, on towns that did not have high debt. And as we know now, all of them would require legislation to, to, to allow them to go forward. And even at that, then, then there would be a lot of, um, work to come up with a, an equation to make them, to make them accomplish what, what the wording is looking for. And I, I would, at this stage, I would be, I think we would be looking for guidance from the Articles Committee, would we not? To, whether or not to pursue any of those and, and if so, how?
Well, the Articles Committee talked on Friday and said, you know, we're with, as written until something changes in the, in the statute.
Right.
As written.
By the, the draft articles, so we consolidate all assets and liabilities.
There was, there was some discussion of trying to write in an alternative, alternative path in the article if the law changes, which is kinda.
In other words, if there's legislative action.
If there's legislation, legislative action.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna say then, it basically, uh, if and when there is any legislative action that might determine if we, if there's anything can be done, and if so, what?
I've had some contact with legislative representatives and that's the, the place their action doesn't seem to have a good, a good plan or any method of attack to fix that problem, the debt issue. There are other issues that they might be looking at, trying to rectify, but I don't think they have a solution for that, especially since some communities have already been struck with, with the burden of higher spending districts or, or other districts' debt, so.
I suspect that's a big roadblock.
Yep.
So there were, there are five recommendations here? And did you have any comment on, I mean, the alphabet legislation change?
I really don't. I mean, they're, they're, uh, they're the worst and the worst and the most worst of five options. They, they are an attempt by representatives from the five towns to come up with some kind of means to, to equity. And, and, and they're all very convoluted and they all require legislative action, which we know is a slim possibility.
You know, it's, what's a solution, it, it wouldn't really require, uh, anything to do with education law, is that we will clearly see what each former district saved or paid. And, uh, an agreement to make a ballot measure for, say, let's say, Middlesex, he said, saves four cents on their tax rate the following year to say, does the town of Middlesex approve redistributing, the redistributed debt from two thousand eighteen to, to the other communities? I wonder how many people would vote yes on it in a, in a community that was, uh, saving a lot because of Act forty-six debt or rep, or spending redistribution. It would be interesting to see.
Anything else on the, on the Debt Committee?
I don't think so.
Yeah, that's all right.
No.
We skipped over three point three point three, Transition Board membership. We may have covered this a little bit already, Bill.
Is the chair and the clerk automatically, you may elect someone else if you, the board so choose. They did change that at the last minute on the draft articles.
Okay. Sorry, I'm just, where that came from. I'm all, I'm confused by a lot of this, but, because we were, we were told at first it was chair and clerk and.
It did, but then some, some folks went back in between to the State Board. So they were first presented to the State Board back in October. And then in the November second of the three meetings in November, they, the State Boards said, you know, there's, and I know Donna had received some of this information, that there are some people who were saying, we're just not gonna do it. Or there are some people who said that the, the clerk has resigned from the board altogether, not because of Act forty-six. So how do we, and we were one of the ones that sent that in. And so what's the process? Cause they, at first it said you had to be the clerk of the chair as of July first, two thousand eighteen.
And was that the draft article or was that the law?
That was the draft, that was the draft article. And then what they, they reappointed that the boards could elect to have someone else there.
All right.
And that came in literally on November twenty-eighth.
Okay. So under our action agenda, it's appoint members to the transition.
That's right. That's what we asked to do. That, that was a recommendation that we thought was good to get to everybody. So we were just clear if anyone was switching roles.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else from Act forty-six we're missing here?
I think your, your, uh, is to what today we know today.
Yeah.
The moving target.
And did you hear in your Debt Committee discussions, Peter, any, you get any indication as to what board, maybe boards are not discussing this in that setting, but what boards are doing with their capital funds?
No, although that was discussed and, um, um, it was also addressed in a couple of the article, uh, proposals, as a way of tempering the inequity.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I don't think there's anything that I could quote. There was conversation about, well, we should spend it or we should get rid of it before the end of the school year.
And I will tell you that at your different fellow boards, there have been some conversation about spending or not. Yeah, I'm gonna suggest to you when we get to three point four that you do a transfer. I, I'm hoping that the, I'm gonna be recommending to the Transition Board and to the new board that the monies that come in under capital plans be allocated to those schools to be used for repair with capital expenses at those schools.
Stay at those schools.
They stay at those schools, basically. You know, we need a new driveway out here and putting that, that what we're over the four percent right now could really help us get to the place where we might be able to get a new driveway pretty soon, with where we're landing.
So let's move to three point four then, on capital fund.
So if I have you, can I have you go to page twenty-four? And you, you've all known this for a while, that, you know, with our four percent estimate for where the fund, the current year fund balance target should be, that's a hundred and forty thousand. That with two hundred and forty-eight thousand, almost two hundred and forty-nine thousand, um, in, in reserved right now, that I would recommend that a hundred and, somewhere between a hundred and five and a hundred and ten thousand dollars of that you move to your capital fund. And I am really thinking about that driveway out there. You know, Chris, when you and I looked at it two years ago, we were looking at a two hundred thousand dollar price tag for that. And it would be something nice to, I think all our car suspensions would like it if we got that fixed.
Wouldn't that money go into just a big pot though? And then it come, becomes the new, the new consolidated boards.
It could. That's why I'm saying, I, that's why I was deliberate about, so what I just said, Carl, is I'm recommending all of it does. And recommending that the board say, hey, can we take what was in the capital fan, plans and say that that's for, Berlin Elementary School came in with that amount of money in their capital plan. Let's use it for Berlin Elementary School capital projects.
So that's an act of, of faith in a way?
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I trust that that would probably happen? But is there a way for us to be a little more sure about that and maybe commit some of the funds to the driveway or?
Well, if you committed them now, we couldn't pull it off. And one of the things I'm trying to look into right now is, um, I was in this discussion, cause U thirty-two's putting a new track in place.
Yep.
And Rummy's gonna put, is going out with an RFP for a boiler. So, um, if we do this today, if we got committals for today, can this board make commitments past June thirtieth? There is a part in the law that talks about honoring all existing contracts, whether it be a personnel contract like my contract or a contract you have with a provider for someone to do something. So I, I have that on a list for Scott Cameron, our attorney, to talk to about and say, hey, Scott. But I, I think for me, everyone's coming in with some pretty good capital budgets. And I think, and I think it's pretty proportional. The one that's outside the proportion is East Montpelier. They've been putting away for every year since they've done that, and they've grown a pretty sizable capital fund balance. But they know that, the way anything does after renovation, you build up that capital fund because your life cycles for things in the building tend to be fifteen, twenty years. And then they start failing. So, um, we also know we didn't get everything done in this renovation that we wanted to get done. We got more than we thought because we were able to get that roof in.
Right.
So I, I have nothing more than your faith to come down to the bottom line. But I think people are gonna be like, hey, we did this for our building.
East Montpelier has over half a million dollars in.
Oh, it's close to, it's between seven and eight hundred thousand dollars, if I'm remembering correctly. I could be wrong. I should always not quote numbers without them in front of me.
Well, that certainly was a silver point with them thinking that that would be folded into, or thrown in the pot.
Yep.
Sorry.
Well, that's the old one. But, uh, I think a recommendation from you, uh, when that discussion comes up, that funds raised in the town for purposes in the, in each school remain there, I think that would be, I think that would be palatable to a lot of people, including the voters who, you know, paid the taxes to put that fund together.
Yep. I'm, I'm not sure. That is gonna be really interesting discussions when, you know, East, when Callis or Worcester need an improvement and they're saying that they're shouldering our debt, that they shouldn't be able to take some of our capital fund to do their improvements.
Absolutely.
Fair argument, very fair argument.
They're concerned about that and they're concerned about losing their schools, um, which is, I think legitimate.
One of the reasons why I want a capital committee. I'm being really open and honest. I want those discussions with board members.
This is, this is not encouraging good behavior on our part. I'm, I'm feeling like we should spend it.
So you're not, almost every other board has felt that way. And I said, guys, if you spent everything that was in, not only your capital funds, but in your, cause some people talked about doing that with fund balance. And I said, hold on, we, we don't know, the reason we have the fund balances is cause we have to have cash in the bank account and.
Yeah, I'm not saying spend all of it.
Yeah, no, I hear you. I hear you. But I also don't wanna dream, do projects quickly and not have them done right.
I understand that too.
Because, I mean, you know, Chris, as well as anyone, if we're gonna do a driveway, we'd better start getting some drawings going.
Yeah, what I heard Chris say was it doesn't encourage good behavior.
I understand that.
He's right.
I understand that. I encourage you to have good behavior.
Discussion, right. And, and I guess what we, what we rely on, Bill, is for you to have that discussion with everyone so that we don't have some outlier that.
I've tried to have it with everyone. I'm trying. Yep.
And then, you know, when the consolidation happens, uh, and Worcester needs a new roof, hopefully the new board would recognize that and, and out of the pot, pay for a new roof, just like I hope they would understand that we need support for math.
Yeah.
And, 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 and early ed or.
Yeah.
Pre-K and say, yeah, that's legitimate. But we'll, we're not gonna know that for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A while.
So that's my capital.
Okay.
And I, if it is so, I would put it on your next agenda to move it over if you'd like me to for an action agenda item. I thought I'd bring it to you as a discussion.
So what exactly are the options, uh, I mean, we can?
You can leave it in the general fund balance. You can put it over to the capital fund. Um, I'm encouraging you to put it in the capital fund because that's had a meeting that the voters approved that fund created in two thousand ten for capital work here. And that helps, there is a piece in Act forty-six about approved funds and keeping those uses as merging. I wanna, I don't have the exact language, so I'm not gonna say that I know it exactly how that works. But I, I frankly haven't gotten to that part of my checklist yet of things to do.
What it more clearly defines what those funds.
That's right.
Which makes a subsequent discussion a little bit easier, maybe.
Yeah. Every town has an approved capital fund.
Yeah.
By the voters.
And that, um, the bu, the proposed budget that we saw assumes that transfer stays in.
The fifty thousand dollars transfer that we had this year stays in.
If I guess one choice we could have, we. If I guess one choice we could have, we have is to use it to offset. But that's a one year and that's the double hole the bill is talking about is, you know, putting money into the capital fund. Which I would maybe perhaps recklessly consider.
Blame the author of Act forty six, anybody wants to take responsibility for that.
No, we don't need to blame each other, we certainly don't need to blame, I mean, we need to try not to blame the other schools in our district. A balanced discussion based on the act that we're all stuck with.
I mean, over the last few years, you got to really know the issues of the other towns and the other districts and. And the policies that they followed, uh, fiscal responsibility, the choices, the tough choices they made. I can appreciate looking at towns like Callis who were, you know, very careful and had a long-term capital plan and. And, uh, you know, they, they did a great job and.
They did.
They're now potentially being penalized for that and East Montpelier, I appreciate the fact that their community. Values education and doesn't mind spending a lot more.
That was their decision.
That was their decision, so I, I, you know, that's their community decision, I, I respect that. I find it tough that, you know, an injustice maybe that Callis is really being penalized and. East Montpelier is perhaps even being rewarded for, for that, the choices their community made, but. If, if Callis wants to take some of their capital fund, I would not think less of them.
They're spending some right now on new septic system.
I'd argue with that.
They have to, because they can't keep it running.
So I just ask you, I think to, Bill, I guess, put, put on the capital fund.
As the transfer or on action.
For next, for action item for next meeting, but to ask in the meantime for. Um, us to think long and hard about, um, what we wanna do with our capital fund balance.
And I, by then I, even if I'm not here, I can pass along the information I get from Scott on. About entering into contracts and all that, I will ask the contract question.
And that would be the one, the, the, the biggest capital improvement that we have on our list.
Yeah, and the money, I mean, you're gonna be at three hundred thousand and if we can do it for under two, so we keep it somewhat, we're not emptying, you know, using, I think. Going less than two thirds of it, it's not a smart idea, but I think we're in that, we're, we're at that point where we might be able to say, and that was some of our conversation. And you'll be putting another fifty into it, so.
That'd be a tough sell, I, and I, I could be wrong, but Romney, Dody and Callis. Have mud parking lots, I think, or, I don't think they have paving at all, so. I think I could be wrong, but I don't think I am.
There's some pavement.
Little bit.
At, no, those are all walkways, sorry.
That might be a tough sell to communities that don't have any paving to make ours better. Everything's a tough, I think, uh, your, your board members are gonna be salespeople that we want to elect for the consolidated. True silver tongue, salespeople politicians, I think are. Boy, the importance of that, I was thinking, I bet the, the, um, consolidated board could meet weekly and still not have time to do all they need to do properly.
There's been talk about having, uh, consultants, uh, you know, people who are willing to help out. People who used to be board members who could be called upon to do homework, I guess, basically. Which would be one way to address all that work that's gotta be done by so many fewer people.
All right, uh, we covered three point five already, mall property update, four point O, reports to the board, um, Bill, any of those you wanna?
I, there's, I would take any questions, there's my report, there's the director's report in there, I don't think there's a report from Aaron. Do not believe I leaf through it. And, uh, I think you know, uh, there was a great bingo session here for Eric and his family, for his daughter and. Yeah, and Aaron was here and he told me it was fabulous. There's a lot of people that weren't necessarily, that he didn't recognize from being school parents or school community. And, uh, you know, we're in that transition right now between Thanksgiving and Christmas and time period and, uh. I haven't been in this building this week, I was in it last week and the kids were doing great when I walked around, so. And I just kinda gave you the finance report unless there's any questions, but.
I don't really have much, uh, from the executive committee, there's the, the minutes are on page twenty seven. Can you think of anything from there, Bill, with this?
We talked, we talked a lot about it last week at the, at the supervisor reunion meeting on, in December, so that, that covered most of it.
Policy committee.
There was no quorum at the last.
School quality kind of reported at the SU.
Is the school quality, um. It's the school quality committee that reported at the SU that, uh, those are the, um, the educational goals that we're looking at under our action agenda.
That's correct. And their minutes are on page thirty four and thirty five.
And is there anything from negotiations to update us on?
We've met twice, we've worked on, uh. Can't remember if I can tell you the topic, that's what I don't remember, I'm sorry. But we've been twice, we're soon to get into healthcare and salary, we were working on. Sorry, I'm just blanking on it, Chris, too many things. Vera's been there, she's been very helpful.
All right, are we ready to move on to the action agenda? Five point one, appoint board member, we don't have one, so we'll move on to five point two, accept the audit report, anything you wanna tell us about this, Bill, we got it by email.
You sent it to you by email, so we just got them and I really wanted to get them done here and. In December for the town report and, uh, there weren't any findings or recommendations. I think that was true across the board, there were a couple items on note for changing a few of our little procedures in the house. Which we're doing already or have done, I should say, you all know the effectiveness of Lori people, so.
And so we need a motion to accept the audit report.
So moved, second.
Any discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, we have accepted the audit report. Five point three is recommend approving the school quality committee recommendations for SU wide goal. Related to student learning to the transition board. Can you give us a little bit more background on that, Bill, there was a lot discussed at the SU board.
Right, Matthew thought it would, and it was adopted by the SU and someone recommended, would it be better, would it be just as good to have the local boards adopt these goals? And, and so this was the. This was, this was bowing, this was agreeing with that, saying, let's put it on, so I just put it, had it put on all the agendas. Saying, you know, the goal that we had that, uh, we would go from seventy, forty-five to seventy-one percent of our students. Proficient as measured by star three sixty in mathematics by the end of the school year. And I forget exactly what it was for Berlin without playing my laptop.
We were all there at the SU board meeting, heard that presentation and those were left very broad.
And asking, it was asking, you know, some of the recommendations were asked for us to come back with a literacy goal here in January. And to come back after reflect, and to ask for reflection of all the instructors of math and literacy. At the end of the year, how to go working with the goals and then how does that inform where we would look for a three-year goal. A goal three years out.
I wanna say, I shouldn't bring up a problem without a solution, but, uh, one of the issues that I always have with that is looking at, uh, the. A school as a collective, so you have, we're at forty percent proficiency and rather than. Looking at the kids as individuals and, uh, reaching their maximum potential, and I've said that a lot, but, uh. You know, if you took East Montpelier's forty percent proficient, Berlin's forty percent proficient and you put those. Forty percent together, regardless of the, uh, educational quality, you would still probably have. You know, sixty to eighty-five percent proficiency there, so. I feel like it's very difficult to put on the schools all the responsibility for those who have not reached proficiency. Just as it's difficult to say that the schools are responsible for all proficiency. But that's what we do and I, I can't, I mean, I, here's where I don't have a solution, I mean, how do you measure the quality? By the collective, by a proficiency rating, because in, in reality, uh, there are a lot of factors besides the. Educational quality that lead kids to proficiency, we've talked about.
This is where you and I've said before, we're in different places, Carl.
You think everybody can get to proficiency.
I've seen it, I, I've seen it get, get almost, go, get almost there.
If that's, I mean, if that's the case, then if we are at forty percent, then everybody should be fired. Because if, if it can be attained and it's, and we're only at forty percent.
You said it, not me.
So anyway, I just, I guess my problem is the, the collective evaluation and not treating kids as individual, looking at that stat.
So I want you, in all seriousness, what I want you to understand, we do look at kids individually, we can't say that in a public meeting. We can't tell you what we're doing individually for Chris and for Peter and for you. We do have to talk and that's our, at, at this level for the school or for the SU to look at it as a collective. And we do do that work, that is happening, I've, I've observed, I've been in three faculty meetings in the past nine days where I've observed teachers doing that. With that data, what's it take for Peter? What do we need to do for Peter to help him be a professor? And it's different and it should be, that's, that's my seriousness of the whole conversation.
That said, Carl, are you comfortable approving these?
Yes.
Goals broadly?
Yep, because I don't think there's a solution.
So I entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved if you ask for a motion or?
Do you have the motion?
Wording from five point three.
Wording from five point three.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. Uh, five point four is to appoint a represent, is it a representative? To the Articles of Agreement Committee. Which is.
You currently. Or has been you up to the SU board.
So there hasn't been an official.
There was what?
You mean, I didn't have to go to those meetings?
So Matthew feels and, um, that, that board should re, that there was an ending of date of December third. And that the local boards should reappoint the representative to that and reappoint, recommend a membership. Person for the Act forty nine, you see that down in five, six, they're almost the same thing. But one is going to sunset probably here in December. And then the trans, there'll be an Act forty nine like board to put together the rest of the articles.
Yeah, there's only a little, I think, only a little bit more work left for this.
I think you, I think you're almost done. So you were the member and I suggested in the SU meeting that you keep the composition the same as six because it says. Like a seven oh six B committee, not exactly. And I think from what I've observed, having six people at the table, we get things done.
So I am willing to continue serving if.
On that basis, I move that we reappoint Chris.
Second.
You can't back out, any discussion, wait a minute. Uh, those in favor say aye. All right, so Chris Winters is appointed as the representative for the Articles of Agreement Committee.
Thank you.
Oh, sure, thank, you're very welcome. Appoint members to the transition board, so, so it's not automatically the chair and the clerk.
So I, I, this is the way I look at it, if no one is appointed by the board, the clerk and the ch, the chair and the clerk. The chair and the clerk would be it, I think it allows people if they wanna switch around, so we've put this on all the local board agendas. There's three or four items here, we've put on all the local board agendas for this one.
Again, I was saying, willing to serve, last I spoke to Vera, she was willing to serve.
I think that would be really appropriate, I mean, if there's, anyway, both of you can see your way to doing that and. And on that basis, I would move that Chris and Vera be. Appointed, is that what we're doing?
As members to the transition board. All right, is there a second?
As our own's members to the transition board.
Okay, it was made and seconded, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no, the ayes have it, we've appointed members to the transition board. And five point six is to recommend membership for an Act forty nine committee, so this is the continuation of work on the Articles. After the transition board.
It's really, it's really, it's gonna be that week of January where we have the hearing and, because we have to have a one for, Act forty nine.
So here's where I am willing to serve, but I'm also willing to step aside if anyone else has a real interest. In, uh, being a part of that committee. And that's when this Articles Committee steps aside and a new committee is formed to work on Articles on behalf of the Transition Board.
So you are up to speed.
I am willing to continue that.
Willing to continue. I would move that we.
Recommend.
Recommend, Chris Winters as Berlin's representative to the transition board, to the Act forty nine.
Forty nine committee.
Excuse me, Act forty nine committee. Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye. All right.
Chris, I know we're getting late, but I can get a chance to talk to you about town report and you finished your actions, I wonder if I can just take two minutes.
Let's do that.
I just wanted to inform you, um, I've been, and this again, conversations with, uh, uh, town clerks. We're getting ready, we usually do our town report, uh, and, you know, for the, goes into the town report. I am coming with a recommendation to you as a board and I'd like some feedback. That what goes in the town report is what reports about this current school year or the year before as in the audit. And that, cause there'll need to be a new town report for the budget for FY twenty. That would come with the merged, from the merged board, because they're the ones that will be recommending to the electorate, the new merged budget. So therefore, things that are in the town report that would continue are like the board, the chairs report, my report, the principals report. The list of school salaries, um, the U thirty two salaries, the independent audit report and the audit itself. And there's usually a special child fine notice or something like that, but the rest are all things that have to do with the budget, as in, what's the budget, what's the tax rate? How's U thirty two come into that? All that, as I look down, this is the list, I only brought one copy, but you can see where I circled and where I haven't circled. Of all the items that we usually get into the report.
So you're saying with absolute certainty that there will not be a Berlin Elementary School budget on town meeting day?
That, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying in the town report, we wouldn't do that, I'm not saying that yet. What I'm saying is in the town report, we would not have a Berlin Elementary School budget.
Because we won't have one available in time.
We have one available, you just told me what the budget is.
Well, essentially, yeah.
But, you know, we were going into a merged budget, the merged budget will get presented.
So should there be any contingency planning? Maybe there's a Berlin budget to vote on town.
What if there is a Berlin budget to be voted?
Which would mean there was a stay. Or very early legislative action. These are all, you know, probably.
So, so we need to know by the town, to get ballots done. It's January twenty eighth.
So we can say that the budget that we essentially finalized tonight. Would be available to be given to the town clerk by mid-January.
But not, that, that might be the only thing, cause here's, I just gotta give you a dose of reality in our office. Laura's like, I'm doing this once, I don't have time to do it twice, because she's having to implement new fiscal software right now that's mandated through state law last year. So she's having to build a whole new software system right now, so literally today, she's like, what am I doing now, we're literally in checklist modes.
She's building the six budgets, right, separately?
That's, that's easy, Chris, it's doing all the stuff to get to town report.
Get it to the town report.
To get it to the town report and build all the different tax rates and do it, six, you know, do it two different ways. To get it to the town report and build all the different tax rates and do it six, you know, do it two different ways. And so.
Yep.
With the follow-up on that, if, if she, you, we are building six different budgets, have you had this question come up?
This is the first, you're the first board I've brought this question to. I'm gonna bring it to all of them to say, folks, to do this twice, i- if we get a stay, I think I'm gonna be recommending you to find a special meeting for a budget meeting, for a budget vote. I don't think we're gonna hit town meeting. Because we're stopping everything we usually do. Right now, we're in high production.
Yeah.
Because we usually have to hit the tenth of January with everything ready to go. We check it again and it goes out Martha and Luther King Day.
Yeah. Yeah, now that I think about that, even if we did get a stay, it probably wouldn't hit town meeting day. The budget vote. Just because we're not prepared for it. Not necessarily we're not prepared for it, but the, the work that Lori would have.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're literally building the financial system. And we have to build it in two different pieces of software, because we don't know the state software is gonna be up and running, even though it tells us it will be. We have to build in our old, in our old system and the new system. So, I mean, the financial department right now is humming with a lot of work.
The state mandates that you use the new system.
January, July one.
Theirs is not ready for, to be used.
That's right. Well, you can thank the Senate for that. That came from the Senate Chair of Education.
Yeah, it just, it just boggles my mind. Over and over again.
So I don't know about the two of you, but I guess I'm comfortable not sending Berlin's specific bu- budget information in for the ti- town report. But still doing what you're suggesting.
Yeah, I, I, I wanna, I mean, I think a lot of my report, and I'm hoping some of yours will be too, Chris, about this is the changes that we're embarked, we're in the midst of doing right now. You know, we, it's a non-voluntary merger, so we've got things we've gotta do, but wanna keep you up to date on timeline, blah, blah, blah. That's just where the multiple messages. And that's when you said that, I was like, oh, yeah, I'm supposed to be talking about the town report too.
Well, when are we gonna have an opportunity to tell the voters how responsible we were here tonight to not vote all the things we thought were appropriate?
Well, if they're not gonna see it, we probably should have, right?
Well, that occurred to me also.
So thank you for indulging me for five minutes.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I, I just, I really wanna have these conversations with all of you.
Alright, so back down to approve board orders.
Yep. That's, I'm gonna give you the amount. I had it open, then I closed it. It is twenty-six thousand three hundred sixty-six and seventy-five cents. Got it, Tiffany?
Yep.
Thanks.
Make a motion to approve the board orders in the amount of twenty-six, three sixty-six, seventy-five.
Second.
Second. And any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the ayes have it. And the board orders are approved. Any future agenda items?
I have a couple of reports I need to get to you, which is item for the action, item for the capital plan, uh, information about entering new contracts. And, uh, I think that was it. I wrote some other things that I wanted to investigate in time.
Would, uh, would a bond be a considered a new contract or because of a?
Lori's looking into how we have to restructure things and how we do that with the bonds right now. I don't have an answer for you.
You mean existing bonds or a new bond?
Our existing bonds. We're, we're Berlin School District.
Right.
But we're gonna become a new school district, so.
That's a question that, that, uh, the deck committee discussed and Lori's investigating. And, you know, there are different, one of those proposals addressed the different values of existing bonds within, from school to school, the different ages of the, of the bonds, therefore, the different, the different payoff years. And, you know, the impacts based on the size of those, uh, bonds to a, to a, to a district. And part of the, part of the difficulty with that, that proposal was that it, our bond actually is the oldest. It's not the largest by any means, but it goes out to two thousand thirty-seven, which adds another dimension to any solution equation that you can come up with.
Add different interest rates too.
Right, well, I think that's the biggest issue probably is if, uh, negotiations are reopened, what happens to the interest rates? Those vary from bond to bond and, and they're higher now than they were for any of, any of the bonds, I think.
That's all very tricky. Um, anything else to go on to the future agenda items? We will of course have an Act forty-six section and a board member vacancy section. I'll, I'll try to advertise for that again, see if we can, and if you all can think about, uh, who might be interested. Um, I'd also ask you to think about who might be interested in serving on the new board. Because that's end of January that they have to put their petitions in.
Either of our U thirty-two reps should probably be in that conversation too, or I I think Jonathan Goddard's probably the most experienced board member we well, Vera and Jonathan Goddard, I guess.
Alright, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Or we can adjourn by consensus. Eight oh seven.